I rise to report that the orders exist for the joint committee to govern business.
Thank you, Director. It has been reported that the orders exist for the joint committee to govern business. Those in favor please say aye, those not in favor please say no. Thank you. Can someone move the motion for us to adopt the agenda?
Yes, I am moving motion for us.
Is it possible, sir?
It is possible.
It is move and separate we adopt the agenda as it is. The next on the itinerary is to go in straight for the introduction of granders. I will start with myself, Honorable Larry Gersani, National Assembly Member for the Council, Co-Chair of the Joint Committee of FPAC and PEC.
Salam aleikum, Honorable Chair Walim Kefanah, Member of FPAC and PEC.
Good morning, Honorable Sallallahu Alaihi Wa Eta Wa Ahlal, Member of Public Enterprise Committee and Joint Committee as well.
Good morning, Honorable Sallajalloh, Member of Yarun and Kamboobu, Member of PEC and also of the Joint Committee.
Salam aleikum, Honorable Amadi Jiwal, Funi Council, Member of Public Enterprise Committee and also Member of the Joint Committee.
I am like she's a member of the Claws and Statute.
Good morning, I am Honorable Kevra Hatmuni Sali, National Assembly Member, Funi Jarro, and a member to the refined and supported accounts committee.
Good morning.
Good morning, I am Honorable Musa Chan, Member of the FPAC Committee.
Good morning, Suleiman Janme, Member of Ulu, FPAC Committee Member.
Morning, I am Sir David Asensio.
Good morning, I am Mr. General Adrian Kaitri.
Good morning, Sir Mark Jarro, National Assembly.
Good morning, Claire Ford, Vice President, National Audit Office.
Good morning, I am Fatfat Keesi Saad, Resada to the Committee.
Good morning, I am Penny Mushtaka.
Good morning, I am Penny Putitawa, Clerk to the Committee.
Thank you. Someone else?
Good morning, I am Mr. Maudur Haydar, General Manager, Jarro and Company.
Thank you for the wonderful introduction, and next on the itinerary is the administration of board. Madam Kama.
Aye.
Aye. Maudur Haydar.
You are founder.
Do I founder?
I'll speak the truth.
I'll speak the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth. Help me out.
Thank you, Mr. Maudur Haydar, Manager, Director, Jarro Head, the technician here in person, both Mr. Chan and the Office of the Audit General, extra members of FPAC and PEC, the committee clerks and the whole of secretary that are here in person, the media team, and the journalists that are here today. May I extend a warm morning greetings to each and every one of you? Today in the morning we provide to continue on our mandate that is given to us by the Plenary. Mr. Maudur Haydar, on the 22th of July 2024, a parliamentary motion was tabled. In the Plenary, suggesting an inquiry for a petroleum product of 36,934 metric tons, equivalent to 30 million US dollars. And this was referred to Finance and Public Account Committee and Standing Committee on Public Enterprise as a joint committee. And these are petroleum products. The report shows that there was an issue of bribery, tax evasion, by Apogee FZC, Crete Energy Limited, and Ultimate Bage on the sales of this petroleum product in the country. Based on that, we as a committee, we sought and identified all these stakeholders that we feel are connected to this. To invite them to have a frank discussion about the whole issue in order to uncover the realities of the whole saga. After which we will analyze and generate a report to present to the Plenary and advise the government what to do. Best part is I want to draw... I want to draw your attention to constitutional provision that also mandated us to embark on this interesting exercise. Section 109 of the 1997 Constitution, Sub 2, the committee may appoint: A) to investigate or inquire into activities through administration of ministries or departments of the government, and such investigation and inquiry may extend to making proposals for legislation. B) to investigate any matter of public interest. Let you come to 110 of the 1997 Constitution. That's content of the National Assembly. Any act or omission which obstruct or impede the National Assembly in the performance of its functions, or which obstruct or impede any member or officer of the National Assembly in this type of his or her duties, or up front the dignity of the National Assembly, shall be a content of the National Assembly, and in addition to any liability in respect thereof, under the criminal law, the offender shall be liable to reprival or admonition by the National Assembly. And if the offender is a member of the National Assembly, suspension or expulsion from the National Assembly. Then 119, privilege of the witness. Every person shall want to give an evidence or to provide any paper, book, or records or order document before the National Assembly or any committee of the National Assembly shall be entitled in respect of his or her evidence or the production of such document as the case may be to the same privilege as if he or she were appearing before a court. Where the president or any order or any member of the cabinet satisfy the disclosure of the content of any document sought by the National Assembly or a committee of the National Assembly will be injurious to the public interest or prejudicial to the security of the state, the National Assembly or such committee shall only give consideration to such document in private under such condition, as will prevent the disclosure of the content of such document outside the National Assembly or the committee, as the case may be, and shall not be published, shall not publish the document or its content. So based on these things, we only draw your attention. What we need is the whole truth, and we want to have a frank discussion with you, what you know about the whole saga. So I will now invite the little questioner to take us to the set of question that we prepared regarding on what you know about the whole issue. So on that note, I want to invite the right Honorable Kevra Hatmuni Sali for her now to leave pause the question. Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair. Mr. Haidar, you are welcome to today's proceedings of the Joint Committee of FPAC and PEC. As Honorable Adulet to by the Chairman, I will go straight to starting the question. Mr. Haidar, can you tell us who is Jarro and Company? What do you think?
Thank you, Honorable. Thank you for presenting here. It is indeed an honor to be here to share what I know. Jarro and Company is a Ghanaian company. It is set in 2005 as a small business in the petroleum sector. And over the years, under the leadership of Mr. Hamid Hichar as the group writer and the group lead, yeah, the group head. Over the years, it has developed to become one of the country's leading petroleum products distributor in the country, which is 100% Ghanaian owned, and I think is the, is quite an achievement in the history of this country. Today, we are blessed with about 29 retail stations, including about two or three mix stations in the country. And this is the company that sets the base for the Jarro as the foundation that has also evolved and created other businesses around it. We are multi-industry, Jarro Foods, and now we are into the, into the making of a petroleum trading and storage company. Fastly in the making. So in a nutshell, that is Jarro and Company.
Sir, what is this difference of Jarro and Company in the industry?
Well, like, um, like I said, it is one of the major distributors in the sector. Having said that, having, having said that, what that means is today, in the game, it is one of the major... It's one of the major distributor of the petroleum product in the country today, and one of the most important in the sense that it has now evolved not to be only privately owned, but if you look at it, it has graduated into being public interest enterprise in the country today. And in that sector also, we glad also always say that it's one of the biggest taxpayers in the sector.
In your response, you re-indicate that you have 59 petroleum stations. Does it mean that Jarro and is predominantly engaged in the inline distribution of petroleum products only? Or are you active in other areas?
Well, nationally, yes, this is what I'm talking about, that's when, that is in the game. When you look across the border also, we have spread.
No, we, we, we limit it to the game. On the game, are you only operating at a distribution level?
Yes, predominantly.
Dominantly. Can you provide the certificates of registration of Jarro and all other equipment in the operation?
What do you mean, the certificate of?
Your registration certificate.
Registrations, yes, we can, we can provide that. If I had one, I would come with them.
No, no, that's in order. Mr. Haidar.
Yes, sir.
Do you know about fleet energy?
Yes, um, fleet energy, like I always want to put it, is we see them as a business because the way we come to know about fleet energy...
Sorry about this.
It's alright.
You can do your own procedure.
Yes, fleet energy, we come to know about fleet energy, I think if I lack a part of 2022, if my own size been right into 2023. And the only way we know about them is we heard about Apogee in the country, a company called Apogee that sells petroleum product as an importer or a trader into the country. And then we had discussions so that because we source petroleum products from traders abroad.
Can you clarify this Apogee products, is it Apogee FZC or Apogee FZB?
To be honest, I don't pay attention so much on the latter letters because sometimes you will see Apogee FZC and then at one invoice, it was also revised, it was Apogee Gambia. And then, but that didn't imply because there was a claim that that is not Apogee Gambia. So what in the bottom line is, when you buy from Apogee...
Let's, let's clarify my name.
So how I know him on paper is FZC.
FZC, but do you have other documentation where it will be Apogee FZ something different from C?
No, I can't remember honestly.
Then you can proceed.
So the only way I come to know about fleet is when you buy from Apogee, the invoice and receipts is issued by fleet energy.
What do you buy from Apogee?
Petroleum products, this is, to be specific. On very few occasions, if I remember three times. And then what, what prompted that was because, you know, we have a line network and our need for the product is key.
And we will, we will pick it up and we will lead you. Let's, let's get this step by step. You said you came to learn about fleet energy when you had the need to buy petroleum products.
Yes.
After many inquiries about Apogee, that's how you came to find about fleet energy?
Yes, through their, through their invoicing and receipts.
Who introduced you to Apogee?
Well, we were inside of petroleum product because by then, our supplier, that happens to be PSTV, is our traditional supplier. And then they run out or they were scaling down into the country. And once they scaled down, we have to quickly search where we can get petroleum product. And that is when we were told that actually from colleagues that there is a, there is enough product at the depot owned by one company called Apogee. And that is how we contacted them. And then they said one of the key person resides in the hotel. By telephone, we contacted, and then we showed interest. And then...
About when?
Yes.
Let's, let's get this really well. When you were side of petroleum product was right, who gave you the information that Apogee has some sense of activity there?
But to be honest, because when Apogee came in here, it was none of a secret. It was known because for us, the OMCs, those, some of us who place in the market, we share informations very quickly.
Okay.
So if somebody knows about product availability in somewhere or anything, it goes round very quickly. We even have a group sometimes we share informations from. So immediately we knew there is a new actor in the depot called Apogee that has enough stock in those tanks. So that is how when we were running our product because of PSTV's inability, and then we didn't also see a new person where we can, we chase product quickly. Then we said, let us get some from them to keep our stations running until we can find another supplier.
And eventually, you were directed to the representative who resides in the hotel.
Yes.
And who was the name of the representative?
I wonder if he was it? The name is one or is Mars, I don't know, something like that.
What, what was his position?
Well, they said he's the rep, that's what we are told. I don't know what his actual, actual portfolio is in the company, but they said he's the rep.
And can you tell us?
Tell us, like to continue?
How did you, the transactions, how did you...
Yeah, yeah, like I said, then we call a number that we have and then showed interest. And then he said we should tell him how, we told him the quantity, I'm not sure. It's one of the receipts, the, 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 one of the invoices and receipts I've submitted. That is the first transaction, to remember the quantity. And then when we told him, then we had an invoice plus the bank details on it. And then that is when we, I first saw Crete on it. And then I said, well, is Crete, how is it that Apogee and then now it is Crete? They said Crete is the local brand, is the local representative that is doing transactions in the country. I don't want to find out too much into details as to why Crete is creeping up instead of Apogee in the first and very far too. There's an internal market for them, for us, what is important for us is we want product.
Let's, let's get this.
Yeah.
Who gave you fleet energy invoice?
It was sent to us by, uh, let me just do some refreshment here, because like I said, we did very few transactions with them.
No, we, we want to know when you made the invoice.
Let me check something here.
And agreed on a transaction by petroleum products. But eventually, how did you receive fleet energy invoice?
Usually, they will send this thing either by, uh, they will send it by email typically.
We can proceed, we will get to that.
Yeah.
Now, how could you receive the fleet energy invoice? Did you confirm its authenticity from Arimas?
Authenticity of the invoice.
Because you said...
Of course, you, of course, have to ask questions that when we receive an invoice for that, for the first time, or there is this, they said, no, it's not a problem, it's the same company. So that puts our mind to rest and then we proceeded.
So which means you came to know about fleet energy after contacting Apogee.
Yes.
By petroleum products.
Sure.
Instead of them invoicing you using the name Apogee, they invoice you using the entity.
Right, yeah.
Do you know ultimate logistics?
But to be very honest, I don't know anything about ultimate logistics. The one I am familiar with with the few transactions we have is Crete. Maybe, um, yeah, it's Crete, that's all. I don't, I don't know much about, I don't know anything about ultimate.
You've never had any business transactions with yet?
Not that I can remember. But with Crete, yes.
You've never done any business transaction that will lead you to ultimate day?
Not that I know or I can remember.
Now, because, okay, you were about to say something.
Yeah, because you know how these transactions go, it is usually not very, it's not a long process. It's a telephone call away. You indicate your need, for example, I have 100 or 200,000 liters. And then they give you the price, you do the calculations. You understand, you tell them, send me an invoice, then they send you an invoice. And then you do the payment, and once you do the payment, you get your receipts. It's very, very straightforward as far as we are concerned.
Since you didn't know much about ultimate day, or you didn't know anything about ultimate day, let's come to on Crete. Why do you think it was really strange that you received an invoice in the name of fleet energy instead of Apogee?
Well, to be very honest, um, to tell you my honest opinion, um...
No, let's, let's base it on the normal procedures that you...
That's what I'm trying to tell you here, that's why I would write that. To be very honest, um, for us, when we are told that Apogee owns the product, and then Apogee is telling you, it is okay for Crete to do the transactions because it's the local company. So for us, what we just thinking is maybe it's their representative, is their representative in the country. That's what goes into the mind, that maybe they are not registered and Crete is registered. That's all.
Honorable, you re-indicate that you were dealing with PSTV?
PSTV.
Was it the same?
No, 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 that one is different.
Will they sell you fuel and then bill you an invoice via another entity's name?
No.
They're not, they're explicit plans.
Well, PSTV is very, is very direct, is very straightforward. They are traders, and what traders typically do is they bring the product. For example, if you order from them Jarro, you say, for example, I need 3,000 metric tons. They'll bring your parcel of 3,000 metric tons. Along, alongside that, they might bring extra, which they will dump into the tanks. So that if there is anybody else who needs fuel, or for us, for example, we run out and our next order is not forthcoming yet, we can still buy from them with what they have left that excess in the tank. And that is always very straightforward. You send your request by email, they respond whether they have it, they invoice you with that response. You pay, they receive you, you receive your, your distance. So those ones are like, they're actors on the ground. These are international traders, their activities are limited in the bonded warehouse, that is T V. But for the first time, I'm seeing this kind of a transaction whereby a trader is nationally involved.
Let us, let's reconcile the two. What was Apogee's role, or what was their status, or what is their current status?
And to be very honest, I think that will be, when you come to their status, whether they are actually a legit trader or a distributor.
Where we are buying from them?
When we are buying, that's what I'm saying.
As a distributor or where you buy from them as a trader?
Well, for us, when we are buying from them, we view them as a trader, but we also see that they are also distributors effectively.
Now, let's, let's concentrate on their status as a trader. You indicate that PSTV are traders and not actors on the ground. Now, can, 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 can you tell us what rules are there in the petroleum trade that combines the illegal of traders?
Yeah, there are categories. For example, the OMCs, the oil managing companies that are nationally registered, that is Jarro and the orders. We are registered here, licensed here to import and distribute petroleum product. We have to get that license, so they have to play in that field. But when it comes to traders, these are international traders, their activities are limited to, um, international, like they bring the products and supply the OMCs or who orders from them.
So what you think, traders cannot play if a turn, a request by an existing OMC is not made?
From experience, what I have seen traders do in the past is they have to get a request because that's the guarantee that they have market. That once they have that market, sometimes they want to target only one person, but going forward, they also want to have more specialists. So even though they are bringing for that one person who brought them into the country... So even though they are bringing for that one person who brought them into the country, they will bring extras. In that extras, they will look for other O N C's who might be interested in ordering product from them. So that's the essence of bringing that extra bit they will put in the, in the, in the depot. And that is where their activities are limited, within the high seas and the depot, and that's where the door closes at them. Then from them who going further, that is where the O N C's play. That is the O N C's who are registered and licensed in this country, those are the ones who takes it to the other level nationally.
So which means the O N C's are the ones who is set. A request from a trader, the trader pays in his product. And then the deputy at the depot. Because in this case, Gamp Petroleum. And then the O N C's will take it from the depot and do the inland distribution, am I right?
That is basically the essence, yes.
In this case, do you happen to know which O N C made a request from Apogee? Was that initial custom or the O N C they were, they're making a deal?
I don't know of any O N C's that initiated Apogee into this country. Maybe, um, the depot might be privy to that information if they have it. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm not aware.
Mister Ketter, in, in your statement, you did indicate that Apogee was the holding company at some point who was a motivator to have absolute allocations in terms of what units. From a point that you described it as a monopoly.
We go to the essence, yes. And I will help, I will, I will run you down to that a little bit.
Yes.
Because usually.
I want to have specifics.
Yes.
Do you need to say that how many times did Jawel last company made requests for units at the depot?
Several.
And do you have any other?
I can't remember because most of the time, I, all I can tell you is, it's been numerous.
Was it five times?
It could be more, it could be more or less.
It could be more or less. So we would need the number of instances, the number of times that you requested. Have your requests ever been approved?
No, no.
Why?
Like you mentioned, the issue of Apogee for us as O N C's who are registered in this country has been very difficult for us during the period, and I will tell you. Because, um, the depot we all know, the Gamp, they keep the, the Gamp petroleum, uh, Gamp petroleum depot, it's a very small depot by capacity. And they can only store very limited amount of product. And all the O N C's in this country who are registered, that's where they should store, that's where they, they store their products for all distribution. Now, what becomes very disheartening is when we realize that one player who very little is known about, has been given very high percentage of the depot, if not all, to store. And that's where we had a problem. Because we were struggling to bring resources to store like we used to do and as mandated and as per our license that they addition to us that we can import and store. And then it becomes very difficult. Every time we apply, it's a rejection. And then.
Were any reasons advanced?
And coming to that, it's a rejection. And then anytime they will say they don't have space. So when this thing becomes obvious that rejections are becoming too much, that is when we monitor the situation at a personal point of view to make sure we know actually whether actually it is true that there are no storage space left. And the only way we knew this was we monitored the stock, daily stock report.
Okay, we will get to that. We, we have questions on the daily stock report. And then when you realize there was space and you did eventually apply to it, we will get to that. But at this point, we, we want to make red flags to. I mean, your statement where you indicated that there was a board resolution passed in 2017 to resolve the issue of U L E D among the O N C's. Was Apogee an O N C?
No, as far as I know.
Were they applying for U L E D?
For sure, through the depot, I don't know how, but yes, maybe. Because if they're getting space, they must apply for it.
And they were being allocated space?
Yes.
But not in there for it. Precisely, can you tell us when did you realize that having access to, or having approval for your U L E D applications was becoming a problem? Which exactly did it start?
It was around June, I believe, um, June, July of twenty twenty three.
June, July, twenty twenty three?
Yes.
Up where?
Um, up to very recently, you know, when, when, when they wind down their operations.
Before this period, was there any policy announcement or a board resolution which might be different from that which was passed in 2017?
Not that I know of, it's possible, but I don't know of any resolution on O L E D.
After this period, you did, have you come across any communication or policy from the ministry which might state otherwise than the industrial law that was passed in 2017?
Regarding O L E D?
Regarding U L E D, yes.
Not that I know of.
Not that you know of. So why do you think Apogee was being taken place?
Well, it's every man's guess, it could be anybody's guess, I don't know for certain. Because if I have to be, uh, certain why they were giving those undue privileges. Uh, I just have to be personally, uh, it's just, it just creates suspicions around that. If there is a space that all the O N C's should share and now it's been given to one person, that's an eyebrow to raise, why? And this is the why question we've been asking. Not only Jawel, but all the O N C's. As to why is it that, you know, such a huge space is given to one? And then the orders cannot even get a piece of that space. And all the time you apply, it's just a no. Oh, one, one reason after the order, there is no space. Um, it is mind blowing, in my opinion.
You said your submission that it was not from the Jawel post the night, but no other O N C was having U L E D at the depot?
That's what I strongly believe because there were complaints from other O N C's when I was complaining too.
Can you give us examples of those O N C's?
Like, for example, I will cite O N C's as an example. Because, um, right around June, July, when I was, when we applied for that, when we monitored the, the stock balance in the tanks, because the stock balance will tell you how much stocks is in that tank and how many, how much space is left. So we monitored it and we realized that at some point there was a significant space left.
And I'll, I'll come to that, as I indicated. We are cutting a fraction for that one, but to draw the routine on this, was it correct that U L E D was being given to an international trader?
Was it what?
Was it correct?
No, it's not correct, according to the notes and regulations.
And you haven't had or received any policy announcement from the ministry which might suggest that traders can equally apply for U L E D before?
Now, traders can equally apply for O L E D, that's not a problem. But where the problem is, the O N C's are giving preference. Because these are the people who are paying, um, and who are licensed and paying the taxes. And who has all the required documentation to do business in this country. So what they've been doing over the years is, yes, O N C's can apply, traders can also apply. This is why traders always need O N C's on the side. So that when they are bringing product, they bring it in the name of that O N C. And when there is excess left, you can also put that in your name as a trader. For example, PSTV can have product in their name, but it's minimum, not in the max. The, the, the O N C's are giving preference to have the lion's share of that space and then the traders come next.
But in this case, what happened?
It's the opposite.
Tell us in explicit terms?
The opposite, what I mean by that is, of course, Apogee was having almost over eighty percent of the space or more. And the O N C's couldn't even have a space, especially major O N C's like ourselves who are, who have been ordering fuel in this country on a regular basis. And then it becomes very mind blowing that actually anytime we apply, we are rejected, we apply, we are rejected. And then even if there is space at some point, we also rejected. So it was mind blowing to just realize that it is wrong, it has never been denied.
In your statement, you need to tell that the depot's guarantee of Apogee almost, as you stated, monopoly in the depot created, almost created a situation which in your words could have been catastrophic for the country. Can you tell us?
That is true, because what was happening, we have the right to order petroleum products, we are licensed to do this. And the only place we have to store it is at the depot. Now, here's a situation whereby you cannot order petroleum product because you will not have space. The whole space has been occupied by a company that little is known about. And then the problem, what that connotes, in my opinion, is if you cannot have space and there is product in town, you have no option but to purchase. Or your, or your front station from dry. And this is why in those few occasions, this is the only driving factor why we have to purchase because we, we running dry. But it is a dangerous thing, in our opinion, because at some point it was becoming so untenable that we also have the right to say that we have the right to order. If he cannot order and we cannot have space, somebody has been fooled. We just sit down and wait until that space is available and that could be catastrophic.
But we had some, some of Gamp Petroleum which indicated the police's stand of the depot and the ministry to say that the rule of the depot and the ministry is to ensure that petroleum is always available in town and accessible.
Uh huh.
That suggests that the preference given to Apogee could have been based on one factor standing out, which was reliability. So that's it, that he had the financials. Could it be that you would not have financial muscle? And had it been space was allocated to you, you would not have been able, right?
I would call that, um, not right, sorry, is trailer. The financial muscle, over the years, since when we started trading in the petroleum products, we have never felt a single month when we didn't bring products into this country to satisfy our stations. Has never happened.
Then average, then average, how many metric tons of E B O and P M S did you think to this quantity before? Twenty twenty three, then average?
Monthly, yes. Okay. The monthly averages are based on your monthly consumption as a business. And the reason why we limit it to monthly, I just want you to understand that they can be a pricing instrument they use, it is measured every month. For example, we would have enough to bring ten thousand metric tons to save us the time of monthly ordering. So that, you know, it gives us a break for two or three months. But in the Gampian system, you cannot afford to bring ten thousand metric tons, put them in those tanks. Maybe you buy for this month at ten dollarses, I'm just giving an example, but on this month. And then come next month, because of the fluctuation of the petroleum prices, the prices dropped to five dollarses. That's a huge blow and losses. This is why O N C's always measure their monthly consumption exact, so that they mitigate losses. This is why our monthly, sometimes it's between three thousand to three thousand five hundred metric tons. Sometimes we can absorb four, four thousand metric tons for A G O.
Is that the accumulation of both the E B O and the?
No, 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 that's, I'm talking about A G O.
A G O.
It ranges between this.
Three thousand?
Yes, between three thousand, three thousand five, four thousand at most. And for P M S, we are between two thousand five hundred to three thousand. You understand, but now, here is a, come to a point, at some point, they almost match with the A G O. So if you have to bring A G O three thousand, you have to bring P M S three thousand on average every month. So but we limited on a monthly basis so that we can mitigate losses because we don't want to be in a situation you have a tank full of product but prices are dropped.
And this happened consistently?
Consistently, on a regular basis without fail.
Currently, how much is your average monthly consumption?
Currently, um, we are doing two P M S three thousand. And then for A G O, we are doing between three thousand five to five thousand sometimes.
Which means collectively?
Uh, between the two, when you add them together, it could be between seven thousand to five, uh, seven thousand to eight thousand.
You requested the depot?
Uh huh.
The various requests that were rejected. Can you take us to, and at every interval or every request tells us how much good did you request for?
I remember one of the, uh, the reason why, one of them I requested for six thousand, I believe. If I'm not, um, mistaken. And the reason for that was because like I told you, our traditional supplier was out of the market. And then we were searching, sometimes you have spot sellers. What that means is you stumble upon a good deal. But this is not your, is not a traditional trader. It's just a deal that you have stumbled upon, he's selling. You can be the highest bidder based on your average prices and you buy. So when you stumble on such kind of deals, you want to maximize your orders. Because it's like you have just stumbled upon a deal. And then you don't want to miss it, so you want to store.
And next, you requested for six thousand metric tons.
Yes.
Was it approved?
It was not.
What was the reason advanced?
The reason advanced was there was no space.
Did you, did you have any other request that was rejected, which you can recall?
Yes, I think about three other requests were all rejected in the same manner, three or four of them. That there was no space, there was no space, that's the only reason they give. But, but one of the last ones, um, that brought a few between us and the depot was when we wrote for a request for O L E D and then they said there was no space, we replied. And then we looked into the stock report and we realized that there was enough space at the depot. Nine thousand metric tons to be precise at the time. And then I said this, then I asked the other colleagues, did anybody apply for O L E D? Then they said, no, one of them, I think, Olix said he also applied, but he was rejected. And I said, then the space is for who? And that is when I wrote back to ask for at least an explanation because something is not right here.
Who did you write to?
I wrote to G P and the, um, the, 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 the general manager of G P.
Okay.
To give an explanation at least, at least, you know, if you are saying that there is no space and I'm seeing abundant space in your depot, at least give me an explanation as to why are you rejecting me? But I think that it didn't go down well on you.
Did you, did you get to a response?
He responded?
Yeah, what did he say?
It was bad, it was, um,
Did you, did you have?
It was a personal attack, I think I submitted, um, one of the, uh, instead of focusing on matters that I am requesting, I think, um, it ended up being a personal attack.
In the people's private life?
And then, uh, which also didn't go down well on me. And then I reported. And, um, at the end, it becomes.
Tell us, when you wrote to him requesting for an explanation as to why your application for ULEGE was rejected, even those places was available. What was his response?
His response, um, his response was, he's trying to paint me, the writer, as malicious, like even though going direct to give me a simple one line or two line explanation, there is no space because space, as you are seeing in the system, has been bought by Mr. Whoever. Whatever explanation you have to give, he didn't give that, but his letter was not very nice to put it, uh, to put it to you in a, in a very straightforward manner. His letter was not straightforward, it was the rhyron point.
If the letter indicates anything, that was suggested, why the space was not allocated to you?
No, he didn't, he didn't go, because he knows what I am trying to dig out because he knows at the time attentions were on Apogee, that anyone, you know, been allocated all the space. So but all he told me was, you know, there was no space, there was no space, even though I could see that there was space at the time.
So eventually, when you realize that you could not have space from down petroleum, what did you do?
So eventually, when, when that happened, it becomes a push and pull because by then I was trying to follow the due process so that they can be called to explain. And the only options I had at the time was number one, to write, to write a, a protest letter to him indicating my frustration and also give it to him in kind, the way he gave it, number one. And number two also was to involve Pura, the public regulator, to intervene, to see and investigate, to see if we are treated right or wrong. And also I involved the ministry to also intervene, to see if we are treated right or wrong. All this time around, just trying to find a solution so that, you know, they can put him in his right place that what he is doing is not right.
And eventually, what was the outcome of that?
Well, the outcome of that, Pura did wrote after, it took them a while, after they inquired into it and they categorically wrote to him that.
To him?
To him.
Specific?
Yes, to the GM. Yes, they wrote to GP to tell them that actually OLEGE should be treated fairly. You understand? And then they put it to him that you cannot be allocating an entire space or eighty percent of the space to one trader whilst the orders are struggling to have a peace. So a letter was written to that event and I think, um, um, from that end, we still continue to struggle.
You were right, which one? And here?
I think that was in my submission, I couldn't remember the date, but if you check, uh, allow me to scroll through.
Yes.
Okay, um. This was the letter I wrote to him asking for an explanation and then.
Precisely, you want to know what made you think I respond?
Yes, what I tried to see here. And this was my letter to Pura on the eighteen of July.
Okay.
This was information and action.
Okay.
And then, uh. So you asked for this, uh, response, this was the reply that from GP when I, when I asked for an explanation. This was the response.
From down petroleum?
Yes.
Okay.
For Pura's response, I'm surprised.
If you, if you do not have.
Yes, my, my, I can have, I can allocate, I can give you that.
You can provide a. But eventually, did you receive any response from the ministry?
The ministry, when I.
You were actually protesting.
Yes, when I protested and to Pura and then Pura was late for a response back. And you know, I became very impatient, so I was calling different people, including the ministry and then the ministry asked me that to at least put something on paper to officially, to put my points as to why, why I feel that, um, things are not going well at the depot, what are my reasons? And I think that is when I wrote also to the ministry to explain the whole frustration and the whole saga and what has been going on.
Did they respond?
Yes, in, uh, somehow, yes, they responded because the frustration was number one.
Now, how did they respond?
What?
In which form?
Not in writing. Not in writing because what, what, what they ended up telling me is, um, since we couldn't have storage, I said, now what do we do? Because we cannot be forced to buy from a business that is not giving fair trade terms or even if they give fair trade terms, it's a free market. We are not in a monopoly, we are free to order anywhere and from everybody. So that is when this issue of applying for alternative storage becomes an option.
Let's, let's get this straight. When you were writing to the ministry, did you give them options? What did you actually ask for?
For the minister, the first letter I gave was to explain the whole process of the OLEGE, the whole confusion and the whole, uh, everything that was happening at the depot.
Which means you wanted the ministry?
And I give this.
Sorry, sorry. Which means you wanted the ministry to intervene at the depot?
Yes.
Did they intervene at the depot directly?
Not directly, in my opinion.
What did you do?
What they did was, what they did was because at some point, even the ministry wants to intervene, if you have a tank that is already full and is filled with petroleum product and then your petroleum, your supply is standing there waiting for you to give me the train line because your product is with me. Even if they come to the source of the Gambia, it's still not going to solve the problem because the tanks are full. So the only option I got from the ministry was to give us an alternative to dump it in Senegal so that we can be transporting it overland, which we got.
So which means the ministry made no direct intervention at the depot?
As far as I am concerned with my, with my, with the issue I had with them, that I can live with.
So the ministry give you the alternatives now for you to be what? Dump the ULEGE well at Senegal?
That's the only option we have because the tanks are full here.
No, it's, this is not you now, we are looking at the ministry. So which means now you don't have ULEGE in the Gambia. Both you and the ministry are designed to create that Gambia petroleum logo, right?
Yeah, we suggested to them because there is a letter, I'm coming to that, there is a letter after all these noise we had about OLEGE. Then we suggested to them that now the only option we have, since we have already ordered for this product, and telling the supplier that I don't have OLEGE, it's going to be catastrophic, the charges will be huge and it could be even a total loss. So the only option we have at the time was to apply to the ministry to allow us, because we have to tell the, this particular trader to put the fuel in Senegal because they don't have the storage. So what? Now, the issue we have is where we need the help of the ministry is to allow us to be transporting this product across the border from Senegal.
How many metric tons did you?
About six million liters, about six thousand metric tons.
Six thousand?
metric tons.
metric tons. And what does the ministry really need to do?
Well, at that time, all they need to do at the, at the time, as the main control was to allow us to give us that, uh, that approval to be able to be transporting this well across the border from Senegal. You need that permit to do that, according to the regulations, you cannot just go across the border and give a thank and give a thorough approval from the ministry.
And that was granted?
It was granted.
Normally, when you transport this wealth inland from Senegal, how does it go? The moment it enters the territory of the Gambia, does it go straight to your filling stations? Does it go to the depot? Where do you keep it?
Yeah, that's right. The only disadvantage to this, uh, overland transportation is as the trucks rolls in, you have to go and dump them somewhere in your, in your, in your filling stations because you cannot dump them at the depot and you don't, Jarwai also don't have the storage where he can dump those things. So what was happening is you can only bring a limited number of supplies per year need. For example, we send our trucks over there, ten trucks maybe, and then they fill them up, they come, so we distribute those across the country. It was not the cheapest thing to do, but at least it's an option.
Do you pay when you store this well in Senegal?
Do you pay what?
The storage facilities in Senegal, do you pay?
Of course, the storage, the, the, the storage, storages will always, will always charge.
How much do you pay?
I will get you that, uh, because our network in, that one someone, um, in the Gambia, the one who pays that for us, but I can get that information for you.
Okay. In your statement, you did indicate that there was a situation at the depot when the well stock of the OMCs were stolen.
Well, because the.
Sorry. Can you tell us precisely, when did you notice this?
Um, one, okay, but before we get to that, let me just give you a rundown, I'll come to your question, why I brought that along. Because the SKUs, the depot was advancing that why they have to give the entire tanks to Apogee to fill them was because OMCs left them.
I, I, I'll get to that.
Because they're connected, we have to connect these trucks for you to see, to make sense.
Allow me, I will come. For us, it's part of our responsibility to detect what we might assume.
Let's do it.
To be, to be opinions, we, we'll get to it, not in the way and form that you might think, but we'll get to everything and future. Now, let's get to the issue of the storage.
Yeah, because one, at one point, actually, once we, you know, when you have stock in the depot, they send you stock report, what you have taken and what is left. And then also the depot also will issue a stock report, the inventory, to show what is in the tanks, what is pumpable and what is not pumpable. So we were just monitoring those records and then we went, they said there was no stock at the depot for PMS. And then we said, wait a minute, we, at the time, we have some stock there, Olic have stock and others. Then you said, how come stocks are dry at the depot when we have stocks there?
For Jarwai?
Yeah.
In absolute, then how much was your stock balance there?
I will get to that, it was, uh, it was, uh, I'll get to that, um, just allow me, I didn't expect that you will ask me the actual figure, stock balance, okay? At the time.
When, when was this? Can you tell us?
This was last year, twenty twenty three, uh, to be precise, um.
So you said.
Asked by earlier. So when we, when we, I was coming, so when we checked that, we said, no, this is not possible, we have stock there. That is when we confronted, said, how come you guys have the stock when our stock are there? And then it becomes a big disimmy, someone meeting.
Who's someone in the meeting?
We, the OMCs, okay, to see how is this possible? Then we asked each and everyone, Olic said they have so and so, we said we have so and so, Starwight said they have so and so, in putting all together, it was a healthy, healthy balance. So we said, where is the stock? Then we pushed, you see? So that is when we even went to GP to ask them about this stock, the missing stock. And then there was a push and pull and then that is when they said, yes, we agreed our stock, but you said in your stock report, you said it's empty, but we have stock here, where is the stock? And that is when they said, actually.
Hey, who is there?
The GP, that is the GM, they said, they used the, our stock to pay for the missing stock of the Malians in twenty twenty one, you invented our saga.
They used our stock, your stock, that is the stock of the OMCs.
Yeah.
To pay for the missing stock of the Malians twenty twenty one, in twenty twenty one. When, in which forum did they give?
GMS. Before, when we went to ask for, uh, I think, uh, we had a meeting, two meetings about this issue, one was in his office, first time to go and confront him. And the second time, I think we had a meeting at the petroleum, if, if I, if, if I could remember very well, uh, the Minister of Petroleum, still about the matter, you know.
What was the meeting with your vice president about?
The same matter.
Same matter.
Because we are pushing that, you know, the, the, the stock has to be, has to be replaced. So but when, because he's not, in my opinion, he's not very good in handling people.
Now, we, we would not get.
Let me just, let me tell you why, you will tell me, why did it get there?
You know.
So because every time we had this discussion, there are push and pull.
We will not get into personal.
I'm not very personal, I'm just telling you factuality.
What you want to hear is you get all of this, you want to know, regardless, the requirements, the rules and the regulations, what should we do against what is done? This is how far we want to go. Now, let's get it one bit from the line, okay? You have a series of meetings, you have written in his office, you have written at Gambia Petroleum, you also have meeting at the Vice President's Office. Which of these meetings would you say was the one that provided conclusion, conclusion to the issue of this stock?
At the Vice President's Office.
What was agreed at the Vice President's Office?
No, no, it was, that is when he was asked to explain, then he explained like I told you that the Malians were putting pressure on him that, um, they need their stock.
Yes.
And then even though his stock missing before he was there, and then he said when the pressure was too much on him, that is when he gave them our, our stock, our product.
And what was the position taken by the OMCs on that?
We asked for immediate replacement.
Eventually, when, where your stock balance is replaced?
Yes, for us, I don't know for yours, but for Jarwai, yes.
Okay, the committee will be interested to know how much was the total stock balance that was missing at that, uh, that time. And, uh, Mr. Jarwai, Mr. Hiderara, in your statement. Mr. Hiderara, in your statement, you did indicate in absolute terms, and on good, you said, the issue of ULEGE has always been smooth in the Gambia until the GM of Gambia Tour de Vizlago, the current one, Yerok, took over the depot and disregarded all normal standing practices that existed on the depot regarding ULEGE. When you say normal standing practices, what do you mean?
The norms, like I said, always on ULEGE. They give these things by market shares, you look at the market shares, number one. For example, if Jarwell is applying for ULEGE and then applied for five thousand, yes, that could be his market share. For example, if there is a small dealer, retailer, who is also asking for ULEGE, you look at his market share. So this is how you play with the figures, you look at the market shares. And then the non-resell, eighty percent, usually, eighty percent of the space is prioritized to go to these OMCs. And the twenty percent can go to the newcomers or traders. This has been the norm. And so I had this argument with him in the past, and he said, I'm wrong. I told him, well, as far as I'm concerned, I go through documents and I always want to make sure that what I am talking about, I know what I'm saying. So that is when I made diggings to get into that board resolution, that an issue of ULEGE after twenty seventeen was an issue. Because by then, a regime was going out and a new regime was coming in because of the way the depot was managed. And then, ULEGE was done on, how do we handle the ULEGE issue? And then because of some who were handling the market before, were looking for to have, still have the greater percentage and give small percentage to those who are not handling the market like us. But what they ended up, the board, what they, what they ended up settling down for was that, look, eighty percent should go, you know, to the big players. And when you talk about big players, Jarwell is among them, Origs and the others. And then the twenty percent, we can maintain those for the newcomers or the new players. You understand, and this is how the order is, because you have to do it by market shares. You look at the market shares.
You have a copy of that board resolution?
Yes, yes, it's submitted.
It's submitted, it's part of the documentation that you will give to the committee. Thank you. And in your submission, in your statement, did it also indicate that there was a time you were, you noticed these things in regards to their calibration system? So they specified the flow meters? Can, can you tell us?
Yeah, you know, reason why I put on this thing, this is why I said, you have to look at the context I am speaking from. The context, contextualize the statement properly for, for the understanding of the general public and for everybody here. You have to know why these things are coming up. Because what we have been told, like what I'm saying is, the depot's defense was, we, the OMCs, especially Jarwell, left them. And then once we left them, they have no option, their tanks we are trying, they have to look to somebody to fill them, that's why Apogee came.
No, we will come to that.
You know, that's the context.
Sorry, Allah, we will come to that, that's part of the conclusion.
Yeah.
We know when you left the depot, you went somewhere.
Exactly.
And for that, you killed.
The reasons, yeah.
We will come to that. Now, let's deal with the issue of the failures. How was the situation resolved?
Yeah, the, the, the way it was resolved, because when we first, we discovered in those days, actually, every time we sent our trucks there to fetch fuel, when we do the calibration, when we do the dips at the stations, we realized that there is always a shortage in the truck, before we even offload them, the trucks always start with shortages. And the shortages are huge, they range between four hundred liters to one thousand liters per truck, every time. So it was huge. I calculated this, they measured in the millions. So when we couldn't bear it anymore, we went to GP to try to see how we can solve this problem, because it becoming too much. And then we even offered in that meeting that this could be a problem of your calibration system or your flow meters. But don't worry about it, since we are the one using it and we are the one making the losses. Bring an expert from wherever you can bring it, we'll pay for it, let them fix the problem.
Yes, beside, now we want to be closer. When they said don't to bring in experts from Germany, and eventually, we went here and realized that they are flow meters hard to follow. They didn't stop me, or how did you resolve it?
Because I'm saying, they are missing stock, not so. You said sometimes four hundred from the one thousand liters. Yes, we forgot who to that. They refused to take responsibility. In their opinion, they said our trucks were faulty, when we know our trucks may not faulty, because they were internationally calibrated and certified with authentic license and the disowned license are still active and not expired. You understand? So they sent the blame back to us, we went back and forth on this, we invited Wits and Mesopuras and orders to come and check and investigate the matter.
And what are the functions of the flow meters?
This is the, the one, for example, you know, when you go to the control stations, you know, that dispensing machine, you know, that shows you, when you are dispensing, it shows how many liters has been dispensed. So that's the flow meter, so that shows you the measure, that's the measurement, that's the, that's, that's what does the measurement. You understand, to tell you, you have five thousand liter, uh, liters supply to you. But when you checking the actual fact, it's less than you, in those days. Because of, it's faulty, the calibration is off.
So in this case, tell us in absolute terms, when we say the flow meters were faulty, was it recording higher than what was given to you? Less than what was given to you?
It was giving less, in our skin on case, it was giving less.
For instance, now, if it says two thousand liters have been pumped into a truck, in actual terms, how much would have been in?
It will be less than two thousand.
It will be less than two thousand. In absolute terms, do you know the number of liters that you've lost?
No, well, we don't know, but there was a time I had this bunch of delivery nodes, like this thick.
Yeah, it would have been...
They are all faulty.
It would have been very useful.
And this is what I have said.
Sorry, Mr. Hidera, let me just... It would have been very useful if you had tabulated that so that the committee would know how much losses you've really endorsed as economy. Were you the only OMCs who were affected by this issue of calibration?
We were not the only OMCs, all the OMCs were affected. But the reason why we are the one complaining, I will tell you why. Because we are the only, one of the few OMCs, if not the only, who have their own tanker trucks.
Yes, but, but Mr. Jarwell, beside, the list is what it puts is. Indeed, pure, they indicate after they are finding that the flow meters of Gambia Tour de Vizlago are a problem. And this will be helpful, very good for that. Would you also, as a colleague, when to substantiate, how much the inner weight have lost?
We've, listen, um, we were able to substantiate, like I told, we had this, all these delivery nodes. So let me just learn, so that you can understand what I'm trying to say. We had this bunch of delivery nodes that we are, that we are off, that we are, that we are giving to us. Or we do the calculation from the trucks, we were writing the, the differences on them.
Did you have those, did you have those?
We have them, but the reason why I thought it is relevant to this investigation because of...
Now, allow me.
And I hear about Apogee, yeah, so that's why I didn't even...
Allow me to come, it's relevant to the investigation, it is part of your statement. We want to know how much in total are you taking about, and what steps, where did, who took responsibility for that? So can you provide those statistics, those data points you have? Besides, at some point, you were doing freight deposits with GP.
Yes.
And later, you went to GPS, right?
Yes.
And then you were also doing some inland importations. And later, came back to Gambia Tour de Vizlago. Why did you come back to Gambia Tour de Vizlago?
Because like I said, um, the reason why we left GP in the first place, I told you, was because of this missing stock. Um, the flow meters are not corrected, we want to correct it, they said no, and we are even losing money. So of course, you have to find another option, rather than continue bleeding to them. So that's what prompted us to transfer to GPS, at least to minimize the losses. And then we, with GPS, um, things were going well. At some point, GPS also, you know, it's a private company, um, needed certain space from, for themselves. And then before that, even if we realized that the depot at some point have, um, invited somebody, an expert, to check on their system. So when the expert checked on their system, and then we also found out that the system has been resolved, the problem, that pushed us out in the first place was, was resolved. That is when we said, okay, now since the problem is resolved, maybe we could go back there. And this is what prompted us applying again to go back there. Because sometimes it's not all the space, GPS is a small storage company. Sometimes all the space you need, you might not have it all at GPS.
What is the capacity of GPS?
GPS, I'm not sure, but it's less than the GP, but if GP is about twenty, I think they are about fifteen.
Fifteen ego of your?
Ego, I believe. If, if, if I'm not mistaken, yes. You see, so sometimes they have, it's not sometimes, they also have capacity issues. So when we realized that the GP, now they have brought in an expert, he has worked on their system, it's been recalibrated and it's solved. So we decided to be applying there, so that we can return back, because the main thing that kicked us out there was those missing, those losses.
When, when, when did you decide to come back?
Around twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three, what precise?
Around June, July, if I'm not mistaken.
June, July.
Around that time.
After being absent for how many months?
Almost a year, I think, almost, almost a year.
And can we say you started with GP and inland importation around June, July of twenty twenty two, and later came back in June, July of twenty twenty three?
Yes.
That would be right?
I don't have to check those things, but yes, it should be precise around that time, because the problem started in twenty twenty two, was twenty twenty three.
So the main reason why you came back to Gambia Tour de Vizlago was because, one, you realized that GPS also was having capacity issues.
Capacity issues, yes.
Two, that the calibration system at Gambia Tour de Vizlago was fixed.
Was fixed.
When you came back, was that the case?
Well, we have not had problems with the few... The, the, the time we have started dumping there, it's not, it's not long, this is just few months back. You understand? And then, uh, the few times we have taken product from there, we didn't see much of a difference compared to before.
Are you suggesting, or are you saying that they have started applying to ULEGE applications now?
Yes.
When did they start applying to ULEGE?
I think the first approval I had from them was, uh, what is this, what, in, uh, almost, in July?
July of twenty twenty four. July twenty twenty four.
Yes.
And you started applying to have ULEGE back since July of twenty twenty three? So, Mr. Jarwell, between July of twenty twenty three, with July of twenty twenty?
Sorry, sorry.
Besides, between July of twenty twenty three, July of twenty twenty four, the committee will be interested to have all the applications for ULEGE that you submitted to the depot. And the response from the depot?
I've submitted some of those, actually, I've submitted them.
Yes, we, we would, we would like to have all of them. So take it your records to make sure check if we, we are shocked in our disposal.
I will check if there is any more.
But if there is any more, please, let's, let's have those ones. During the overland fuel importations that you were doing, that is before coming back to Gambia Tour de Vizlago, those overland fuel importations, were they normally tested? The fuel that you were bringing overland from Senegal?
They are tested. They come with a certificate that shows all the cases. And this is what you have to tell them at the entry.
At the entry point, that is at the border?
Every fuel that has to come into the source of this country must be accompanied by the, the certificate of qualities.
Who, who, who do you normally shop in those certificates of qualities, you are the border, who's the customs?
Well, you may say, I am a Christian, and you may say, I am a Jew. This is what you call yourself. Allah never sent Jesus to teach Christianity.
Once you enter inside, you go straight.
Yeah, we, we necessarily, yeah, we, we go to the control stations, but by the custom has the records of everything and everything that needs to be paid is built to Jarwell.
Okay? So, inland importations, in Senegal, what did you pay there?
Like I said, you asked me that question, if I said I will check.
No, no, I don't mean how much.
Ah, okay.
What do you pay in Senegal?
What do you pay as regards to?
Among the variables, you know, you, there is a storage loss. That's one of the variables. There is tax element to be paid.
Of course, you know, Senegal, um, they have a regime of when you are doing an export of this well, there are a lot of limitations that you need to make sure that this well is for export. Because they have to issue you all these things, you pay fees to them, if you need list of these fees that are paid, is that what you're interested in?
But the tax you pay...
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
The money you pay or lifted, if a girl are leaving inland importation, where do you pay that? Do you pay in Senegal or in?
Senegal, of course, there are certain things you pay in Senegal, but once comes into the border, across the border here again, the duties have to be paid to the customs.
Yes, but the tax element on lifting the well itself, where do you pay? You pay it in Senegal for inland importation, or do you pay?
Understand, lifting the well where?
Normally, when traders take their well, they are dealt with at the depot, in Maliani. The OMCs will pay tax.
Yes, so but there is a little trouble, just like there. You know, when the Malians come for export, they don't charge them the trooper. You know, for us that are selling here, we pay trooper. But for them, there is another fee they pay, but it's not a trooper, it's...
For us, it's a great member.
For export purposes.
Um...
So it's the same thing.
It's like, oh, Maria, oh, Maria, great, got it.
You still feel that in the Gambia?
She's not here, right? Maria, Maria. No, okay, pass.
Trooper is only for the depot, if you're in the depot.
Six, eight, eight, eight. Wow, very nice member, I love this member.
That never change, whether it is inland...
Hi, are you here? Hannah, Hannah.
That will not change.
So what are the conditions that the ministry...
Hannah, are you here?
...regulating the inland importations?
The conditions, the ministry will sell power to you. For example, they will see the volume you are trying to order here. And then they will measure that volume and see if the volume can be... Then they will take it there, so that it will not be just an open approval, whereby, you know, for the whole year, you can just be going in and out, in and out, in and out, so they will cap it at some point. So if a ton that cap is finished and you still have some amount left there, you have to bring them to proofs of that. Then they might be, they might give you an extension, but it is always capped.
Do you receive any extension from the ministry?
As far as I'm concerned, for maybe one of the, I think one of such application, I will, I will double check that, maybe one, because of the volume was too much. What is the 6,000?
How many months did this inland importation take?
Usually, it takes between a month or four months.
And for Java?
It varies, because it's not the only time, it's not only one application, it's not. Otherwise, it takes us a month. Because it depends on the volume.
Yes, if you look at the documentation slide, you said from July 2023, up to July 2024, you haven't received any ULE space from Gampetulio. During this period, how were you money, were you all through any importations? Or you were also buying things from other OMCs?
We were... You remember, I told you, we transferred to GPS?
Yes.
Yes. So we are bringing part of our product through GPS, okay? All from there, through GPS. But at some point, through the latter part of it, GPS was also running, they were having issues of capacity, so they couldn't cater for all our needs. So that is when we will apply to bring overland. So it is between the GPS and overland, but all of it is through GPS.
When you ask your services, we are asked about... Said when you paid to you about KIT, you are free. Can you tell us, in total, how many invoices did you receive from KIT Energy?
If I put my history, you say? I showed you the...
In total, money to buy?
On their own invoices, total, I didn't total them, but I'm...
It's almost 31,372,250 dollars.
You see, yes.
So now the question is, why did you settle these three invoices in the name of KIT? You should know that it was meant for...
Because that's what we ordered to do, the product owner.
Who was the product owner?
Apogee.
Now tell us, tell us two differences. If you receive these invoices, what do you do? You receive the invoice to plan to have physical access to the product itself.
When you receive the invoice, that tells you how much you are supposed to settle them before they release it. So you process the payment, instruct your bank to do the payment. And once the payment is done, you send the smooth copy, or proof of payment that you have paid.
Do you send it with?
With the opposite, for the settlement.
Okay.
And then once you do that, and they confirm it, they release the product.
How do they release it?
They will install the DEPO.
They will install the DEPO?
They will give them what they call a release order.
A release order?
For the DEPO, they release so-and-so amount to Java.
How does the DEPO verify? Is there any way that the DEPO would have known that Apogee was using KIT Energy's invoices to deal with?
I cannot tell whether they would know or they didn't know. All I know is, as far as I'm concerned, once we conclude a transaction, they being the product owner, will instruct the DEPO that release so-and-so quantity to Java company or whatever company. And then, the release order will be passed to us, and then we send or talk something, you know?
Just look at the way you do these settlements. Where were you making the payment? Was it into Apogee's accounts?
When you look at the bank details, it has, it cleanses KIT Energy. So even if you check also, it bears KIT Energy. So that shows it is going into KIT Energy's account.
So you were telling us, the product belongs to Apogee?
That's what I believe.
When you make requests on Apogee, they do you...
Where did Mary come from? Before she gave birth to Jesus, you have to know about it.
You make payments to KIT Energy?
Not a single verse in the Bible, in the doctrine. From the Book of Genesis, Exodus, Leviticus, Numbers, Deuteronomy, the Book of Joshua, First King.
Of the world, which we have at the DEPO. Is this the norm with other traders that you tell us?
Where is the norm with other traders? Um, I would say, no, because for example, if it was PSTV or Tragibora, when you purchase from them, the invoice will come from them. And then once the invoice comes from them, you will put their bank details on it. And you pay to those bank details bearing their name. And then that's it. Then, once they confirm it, they give you a release order through DEPO, through the DEPO. That's the norm, as far as I'm concerned.
So what is the difference between the two?
The biggest difference between the two is there, this one is a little bit more creating. And I don't know why they have that, they have that multi-layered form, whereby, instead of going direct, you go indirect. That's not true then.
Direct would have been?
Direct would have been, yes. I'm talking to, I'm doing a business negotiation with company A. Company A invoice me, and I pay to company A.
In this case, let's use the actual terms of the companies, direct would have been?
Would have been, for example, if Apogee is selling to you, Apogee gives you an invoice bearing Apogee with their account name.
In this case, Apogee is selling to you, direct would have been?
Yeah, that's what I mean, direct. But instead, it's like, you know, it's indirect this time, because you're going through KIT.
So instead of Apogee giving you their invoices, and you pay into their accounts, they are giving you KIT Energy. But did you meet confidence from KIT Energy during this entire?
Personally, I don't.
You did not? Which means Apogee was the one who sold to you?
That's what I assume, yes, because they were one of the product owners.
And the invoice that was sent to you from KIT Energy, it was sent by one Mr. Clement? Who is the invoice? That you from KIT Energy?
Clement, yeah.
Did you meet Clement?
Personally, no, I don't.
Do you know him?
I don't know him.
Did you guys ever have any correspondence?
With Mr. Clement?
Yes. Did you at any point ask Mr. Alismos in regards to why these invoices were coming from KIT Energy instead of Apogee?
Really ask them, why are you doing this? No.
You did not ask him? You didn't ask Apogee why you were invoicing, you're using KIT Energy?
No.
Why did you ask him?
Because if they were product owner, they're selling to us. And then they decided, only time, like for the first, first, first transaction, you know, I said that earlier, I said, when we saw that it is KIT on it, we have to verify to see if it is okay, because we don't want to pay somebody who is the wrong person. And they confirmed that, yes, it's okay.
Which means you did ask?
Yeah, that is for the first transaction, yeah.
And they said it's okay?
Thank you very much, liquid actioner. Before I open the floor for speaking to questions, I have few here that I would like to pose to Sahela.
Yes, sir.
Sahela, exactly where are the liquid actioners talking? In terms of reconciliation, Apogee and KIT Energy?
I want to inquire, actually, how do you ascertain illegality of KIT Energy as an OMC in terms of prescription? Since the account that you are paying is KIT Energy, not Apogee, how do you ascertain the legality in terms of prescription as an OMC? One. Two, I also want to know, the stocks, the royalty stock, that was mostly placed in Malian, in Malian, this is stopped for 2021. What is the quantity? And how do those get up and consumed? What was the consumption? The time one would be, one very prestigious, before coming to the force of Apogee. And after the advent of Apogee, what are the procedures?
What procedures?
The procedure of getting this from the, getting food product from the NAPRO. The procedure, what are? The stocks from the NAPRO DEPO, what are the procedures? Before becoming of Apogee.
Oh. Going to your first question as to the legality and the authenticity of KIT. As a business, we... All have responsibilities, for example, as institutions, like, in my opinion, the DEPO and other government agencies that regulates personal products and also businesses, should be in a better position to know if these people have met their legal requirements in the country. But for us as buyers at the receiving end, all we are looking for is product. And we believe, and it has always been the norm, that any product that lands into that DEPO, how the owner of that product has been duly vetted, verified, and also, everything that needs to be in place, paper wise, is already in place. That's why they have the option or the opportunity to put product into that DEPO. So, under normal circumstances, we, the buyers, shouldn't have any questions whatsoever to say that if they have met their criterias or not.
Are you telling us, the protocol, followability or expectancy drop at that DEPO? We have been in those criteria. So do you...
Under normal circumstances, it's allowed.
How about situation if that happen? Is it not your responsibility to ascertain that the one you are dealing with are fully registered and they met all the requirements before you deal with them? If not, you can charge as an accomplishment to inform the activity that they are doing.
You see, when you are buying internationally, or when you are buying locally, paths are different. When I am sourcing product from a foreign buyer internationally, that's what we call KYC. It's a process, you do your duty, duties. Okay? Then, when you do your duties, they also know, who are this selling product, they have to know everything about Java to see if these are legit company before they would even allow us to start discussing for them. As a buyer, also, we do the same thing, we do our duties. We request from them, understand, other documentation to make sure that we are dealing with a legit business internationally. But when they are inbound here, it means somebody have already done that for you, so the path goes forward. Because the main factor, they have been allowed entry into the country, it means that they have satisfied everything that a normal business should satisfy before they are allowed into the country. So for us as local buyers, we just follow and buy. You understand? That is the, that is the normal procedure. And so, you know, you might disagree with me, but um, this is a normal thing, like if I told you, we are the one who are bringing Apogee into this country as Java, that we want you to become our supplier. If they would ask us all related documents to see our legality, as the same way we also ask them, certain documents, to know if they are legal. Because we don't want, as a reputable company, legitimate company, who is on the side of the drug dealing or something else. Because that would come to haunt you one day as an international company, you might even be banned, you know, internationally. So it's a very dangerous thing. So every company is very mindful of this. You have to know your customer. You have to know the person you are dealing with. That's why they put the KYC process, it takes a whole time. But now this one, what makes the difference is, you understand? It is a registered business in the country. What makes it a registered business, and what makes us believe that it's a registered business? Because they are running a system, they are running a business into the country. They instant, a middle banker down. Open in their name, I'm talking about KIT?
KIT?
Yes. You understand? So for us to say that we have to do their KYC, when they are not even here solely for us, they're here for everybody. You know, it would be very unfair to be not on any of the OMCs, because it is not us who brought them in. Those who brought them in, ask them that question.
And who brought them in?
That's a question I should ask you.
How about the stock, the listed stock that we are...
Sir, the Malians, like I said, he told me, I said, I didn't know that it's really relevant in this, but if you want me to provide the details of like how the, how it was involved on our part, I can provide that.
For procedures before the advent of Apogee?
The procedures, the normal procedures before the advent of Apogee was very, very straightforward and plain. Procedures were? You mean for all age or for international traders?
All age.
All age. The procedure was very straightforward. They look at every OMC has a market share in this country. The bigger, they give it a bigger chunk, a bigger share. You understand? This is how they used to measure it. But you want to compare, for example, Java, you understand? With a, with a company that has two or three stations. And you tell them that, we're going to give you the same allocations. It's not fair. So what they used to do is, they will give them allocation, yes, based on their market share. But Java also would give an allocation based on its market share. This is why it was agreed that 80%, the chunk of the space at the storeage is always kept intact for the bigger players, for the old players. And then the order balance, you leave that floating. For example, a trader comes in, he has an excess, you put there another 20%. So that, you know, everybody sees, he thinks some, but they give priority to the OMCs that are registered and qualified in this country.
Thank you, what a decision.
Thank you so much, Aravat Jay. Mr. Heybrun?
Yes, sir.
Already I have a few questions that I have noted, you know, today in two. But before I get to your first question, why do you think the content of your statement?
It was about losses of, losses of, of studies of fuel would not be relevant to the committee? Something that was written by you to have it in your statement for parliament's consensus would not be relevant to what we're doing?
Yeah, relevance in the sense, reason why that was put in the statement is to give you the context, background of what we pulled out of GP and where to GPS. That was the only thing. These were the issues that were happening at the time. And then because of those issues happening at the time, that's what compelled us to say that, look, enough is enough, let's move to GP, yes, so that we can minimize our losses and stop the bleeding. Because financially, we are bleeding, because the losses were just too much. That's the backdrop of, that was given a background of that, what led was leaving GP. Because all of this, you know, I said that, look, then the one who just walked out of GP, and GP was left empty. And because of they were empty, GP was desperate. This is why they went and brought these people to fill up their tanks. So to just answer those people's queries or questions, is why I gave you a background of what pushed us out. I don't know whether you got it?
Yeah, but what I'm trying... Yeah, but what I'm trying to establish is that this is your written statement, right? And there are, you know, whether correct or not, allegations that you were given less supplies than you, you should be, right? So to you, that is not relevant?
What I mean relevant in this whole area is, because in my opinion, we're talking about Apogee and how Apogee came into being and what happens around Apogee. So this is why I'm giving more relevance to that than this. The reason why this was given was just to give you a background information for you to understand what pushed us out of the depot.
Okay, can you substantiate this by figures?
Substantiate what? The losses?
Those losses by figures?
Yes, we have the figures. Yes.
Good. Uh, Mr. Heidler, was Apogee having any market space in the Gambia at the time? Given that you used space at the depot?
Do they have any market space, in the sense of?
Do they have any space that they were dealing with or that might have
Or that it-
Other, you know, petroleum products from them, right, needed a space?
Like I said, before, nobody, for example, I would tell you about us. We've never heard of Apogee before. I don't know of anybody also who knows about Apogee before, as a buyer. You understand? We just saw and saw Apogee pop out of nowhere. We started hearing that there is a company that came with a huge amount of fuel, it's stored at the depot and its name is Apogee. This is how we come to know that, there is a company in town, it's Apogee. Who brought them in, I don't know. But and I don't think there is any OMC who will stand here and say, I invited Apogee here. I've not had any that says that. For these were traditional suppliers, like Enoson, Traviura, Adams and PSTV. All these ones are mentioned, there is always, it is when one OMC that brought them in as a base. Then they start with them, then all the OMCs might also buy from them because of they are introduced by, for example, Java. And then in supplying Java, then maybe another small OMC also wants to buy from them, then they can sell to you. But for this one is different, there is no OMC that brought them in, as far as I know.
Okay, so it means there are no market space in the Gambia at the time? So why do you think this privilege was given to Apogee, having no market space in the country? What's the idea? That you used or product space was given to them, denying the traditional, you know, traders like Traviura and PSTV to put in their products? Why do you think this privilege was given to Apogee?
Like I said, that could be really why. But, you know, it could be any of this, yes. Because to be very honest, um, I cannot specifically pinpoint and say this is exactly what happened, why Apogee was given privilege. If I say that, I'm, I'm not saying anything that I know for sure. But you can tell, you can, you can, you can, you can read from everything that you know. If something is not, if, if something is out of the norm and then all of a sudden it is there and then people started asking why this happening? And I think it's the responsibility now, this is why this, as a man, this body is sitting here to establish that fact as to why we did it, that privilege. But for us, as outsiders who are breathing into this investigation, we could dip into it, you know, we can just start with it. But it's very abnormal. That's what I can say.
Okay, within this abnormality, do you think there was any reciprocation of such privilege?
Reciprocation in what sense?
Some, has anything, could anything happen between Apogee and Gambia Petroleum to reciprocate this opportunity?
Well, let's see if not, if you do, if you do this investigation, you would have tell us, when we discover that this is what happened. But for us for now, I wouldn't be able to say anyone, say anything much on that. But like this, it is those, it is those who know.
Okay, you told us earlier on that someone who talked to you about Apogee and you were questioned by the lead question here that, can you tell us who this was? So you still need to remember, who informed you about your, your, the person you trained with, you still need to remember that.
Look, this must be an ordinary OMC like me, because like I said-
Yes, please tell us.
Like I said, when you hear, when I was responding, we always say OMCs, especially from the front.
Tell us who she had this-
You understand? So I don't remember exactly which of the OMCs, but it's in one of the discussions we are having, somebody said, I had that, this is how you do it. I heard that there is a, there is a new supplier, there is a new trader in town, it's called Apogee. There are a lot of products. But I do remember this particular part because I want to be very specific and show of what I'm saying here.
Okay, please, how do you explain? Who gave you, what he wants pretty much number to communicate with you?
Well, because when we are making inquiries into who knows these people, you understand? It's not through me directly, but I think somebody in the, in the, in the office told me that I can find out about them.
Who is that somebody?
That's what I'm trying to say, I think it's in our finance department. Um, but if you want to show specifically, if I want to show specifically who actually pop out at that number, I can somehow that to you. But I don't really read it right right now and I don't want to say anything here. That you know, tomorrow I'll ask saying, you said this thing, but it was wrong. I know you will understand my position, my position on this.
Yes, but it's about interest alone, because who supply, I mean, with that number?
Give it to you, yeah.
Correct. How many times did he speak to, speak to what he wants?
Personally, I didn't.
You didn't, you have never spoken to him though? There's no communication with you from your office?
Personally, because, you know, he purchases in department, it's always somebody, sometimes it could even my boss who might initiate a call to find out. Or in the, uh, what's it called, the property department. But if you want to, if you are also interested in that, I'll give it to you.
Pretty much, we are. My final question, here, wait, something is there. Uh, my final question is about payment. Once you place an order and invoices are raised for you, you, you do the payment and your receipts are issued. Uh, but the strange thing that you've talked about is that the difference between the dealers, between you and Apogee and the rest of the dealers, Traviura and other of the PSTV is that when you deal with them directly, the invoice and the issue, and, and the receipts that are issued to you beyond the name of those traders directly instead of a, a some company or a local company that represents them here. Do you pay those companies internationally? Or you pay them through local banks illegally?
International.
International. So all your wires, those companies were international? Is this the first time that you make a payment to an international trader in a local bank?
As far as I know, yes. As far as I know.
So what looks fishy about that?
I could say.
Thank you.
It could, it could, it could, it could be also, you know-
Yeah, let, let you finish that. But it could be, it could be, what could be, let, let hear that out.
So what I was just trying to say is, you know, we know, like you said, we usually pay to these people directly in an international bank, an international account. But this time around, we are told that, well, you can pay locally. So what was going in our mind at the time was that maybe KRI is the one representing them locally in the Gambia. And then them, they are operating internationally out there. Which is possible. For example, I'll give you one example. It is not exactly like this one, but just a look alike. For example, when we dealing with PSTV, there was a time in their later days, they would sell to us product in light quantity. And then they would talk it in our name, Java. That when people contact them, for example, do you have product for, for sale? They will tell them that all the product we have, we're giving to Java, contact them. And there are some small players who contact us and tell us, we wanted certain quantity of product. They will sell to them. But what makes the difference this time is, the product is ours, it's under the name of Java, we own it. PSTV just facilitated to supply us. You understand? And it's sitting in the tank in the name of Java. That's the difference there. But this one, I think it's sitting in the tank in the name of Apogee, but KRI is transacting. Does that make sense?
Thank you very much, here. Uh, my question, Mr. Heidler, is that based on your submission, you indicated that during the presence of Apogee, you were denied to dump your product. I just want you to, I'd like you to, uh, go to Senegal. I just want you to inform the committee, how does it affect you as a Gambia company in relation to the disapproval of your request to dump at the Gambia Petroleum depot?
Thank you very much. I can ask a lot, because for example, what is more easier? Having your product sitting in your front, in your tank, whereby you just have to send your trucks, they travel a few kilometers, fetch them, take them to your stations and then business goes on. Compared to fetching from Nega, you have to spend all your trucks all the way to Senegal to fetch these products at, you know, huge cost, because the cost is ours. Before you have to burn in those tankers, go all the way there and then bring it with all the bureaucracy and all the checks and balances on the way, all the way, all the way here. And then also with the, this thing that you have to do this on a weekly basis, you know, continuously just to make sure that your stations don't run dry. So it was not very convenient. But it is a, it is, it is a way of, of survival. At least to keep the stations also.
Okay, my final question. So who do you think is responsible for all these challenges that you face?
Well, I wouldn't want to blame anybody but the depot, because anyone who was supposed to be a referee and to do the right and the, 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 the right thing and the need to make sure that space is allocated fairly. That's how it has always been. It's a public space, it has never been a private space. It's for every registered OMC in this country, you understand? I look at them fairly. But once you have denied that fairness and now you localize it to one person, it means then what you are creating in essence is, you are not only denying them their right to function yet and enabling them, by the way, but you are cajoling them or forcing them to go into this? Possibly. With the few times we have bought, we already, we already buy from these people when we are actually very tight. We know that if you don't do this, these stations will not try, that be fact. And that's what I believe most of the OMCs are also doing. But if a tool, we will give you the options that, look, you can order as usual, it is your choice. You either choose buy from them if you wish, or bring your own vessel or order. Of course, we've always been known for bringing ordering, would have followed the process of continuing to order, but not to be correct to a point whereby you have no choice but to buy.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Heidler. Uh, I want to add this question. As a Gambia company, uh, as you have noted last year, uh, you were listed in, uh, two thousand and five. It was listed two thousand and five and also rose to various groups whereby fuel also is part of, uh, your company. Uh, to this period, from twenty seventeen to date, can you be specific? Uh, which of the years are the toughest years in terms of this fuel and unit management, specifically? Which of the years that you faced a lot of challenges in terms of revenue loss, difficulty, this is what you want into this unit management and also the loss of revenue that you occur when you started this particular products?
The petroleum business actually has, uh, its toughest years, in my opinion, is twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. His last three years has been very tough for the sector. Very, very tough. Based on so many factors. One is the issue of where it started, the product, uh, uh, twenty twenty-one cycle whereby product was lost. And then people have to start again and then finding the back of their feet. And then also you come into the twenty twenty-two, you have these flash shortages, you know, of petroleum in the country. And also the pricing, which is even one of the biggest challenges, the pricing in the sense that, you know, the fluctuation of the FX dollar, the dollar fluctuation whereby, um, sometimes the price structure, the amount, the, 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 the dollar amount, the currency amount to the dollar that they usually call also uh, not actual. And these are all challenges that the petroleum sector has been facing in these past three, four years. And then it's still going on. And this is, these are the toughest years, I will tell you. Yes, uh, the other thing also, uh, in recognition of a fault that you said in there, where you and Java are components too, to see that what you're collecting and when you come to your source is a different whole game. And cumulatively, you realize that a lot of hundreds or if not thousands of missing, uh, lesser in terms of what you collect from the depot. And it has no future limit where you've, you've protested to, to see it gone when it was not, when it was engaged. What, what, what was our purpose to, for them to, to, to agree on the, yes, uh, what you people were fighting is true. And we have to bring you back what you lose. Was it, was, was you people very, very ready to, to order the costs or to take other measures as per your strong? To be very honest, um, when the market was going on, especially when the losses were happening, I personally was concentrating on taking the market records because I even, in one of my letters, I believe, found forgetting. I even told them that if this market is not resolved, we are left with no other option but to explore the judicial process of, you know, looking into this market. Because by then it was feeling entire, like the losses were just too much, it's in the millions. And then when we realized all this, that is when we said, you know, why? Before we waste our time here, keep losing, keep losing, why don't we do it for a quarter anyway? That is when we went to GP. And even when going again, when we did that exercise, with the ways and measures, they were there. And they want us to, when we load these tankers and we go and start, we, we stay on the tankers on a flat ground and do the dips. We realized that, yes, they were shortages, you know. But the, 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 the resolution didn't say that actually they would preform us. You know, and meaning also pursuing, all we wanted to, to be very honest at the time, was to resolve the matter and then minimize the, the losses and then life goes on. That's all what we did.
Yeah, the final question. Uh, after your follow of this, why, uh, they made claim to you that, uh, this part of it was paid through the Miami company, oil. In your own view, what would you read GNC? As your follow, knowing the truth on African, there were a very other people.
Gibby, Gibby.
Okay, sorry, Gibby, sorry, Gibby. There are very adamant to, to, to tell you the fact. It was just like maybe, uh, uh, a Concord jet was pushed to them of trying to fire. So this is the time they hear, yes, we have to speak out the truth. What, what, what way do you give them in this scenario?
Well, I would, I would have played them very well, to be very honest. I would hit them with the knowledge they make on that when it comes to that. Because actually, you can have a communication is very good. For example, if you, if I'm going to use something that is sitting in my hand, for example, you gave me some money to give, and I want to use part of the money, but I will repay it. I will tell you, look, that money you gave me, I will use fifty dollars from it, but I will repay it by the end of the day. You understand? But if I don't do that, and then you come and create this for that money, and it's missing fifty dollars, what would you say? You'll say I stole it, because I didn't tell you. So this is it, it was not well handled, the money, you know.
What can we tell of? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ayda. During, uh, around August 2023, when Apodi started entering the market in the area, as a oil marketing companies, are you aware, aware, any policy released from the Ministry of Petroleum with regard to foreign or foreign importation in the country?
Policy around August 23?
No, the policy should be, the policies should be around October or September, 22?
There were a few policies, I think one or two, that were passed for us, to be very honest. I can't remember if you can tell everybody, because I didn't hear it. Be honest. But yes, there were a few of, one or two that were passed regarding the, the story of fuel. And then I think one of them was trying to say that actually, you don't need to realize in each country to be able to store and sell fuel in this area. So it's what like that, I don't know.
So what was, what was your position or the position of your company with regard to that policy?
Well, on a personal point of view, I think that was history drafted, and I think it was not, in my opinion, it's not proper. Simply because if you want to come up with such kind of regulation or a policy, first thing first, what I usually see people do, or what, what is usually done is, invite stakeholders, have a discussion, put it before them, you redo it, and then give it a time to look over it, ponder over it, and then before you adapt it. But for it to just come overnight like that, it's not useful in my opinion.
So meaning the OMCs, we are not consulted. You know the process. Then on the, on the issue of the invoice of Apodi, and then you pay to create energy, as a businessman who is involved in, working in petroleum production or managing a large scale, almost an international company, uh, when you conduct a transaction, for example, like Apodi, you negotiate with Apodi, Apodi asks you to pay to create energy, does that not, uh, does not, does that not warrant you at least an eyebrow, something fishy is going? Especially the amount of money involved in this transaction?
To be very honest, I would tell you very, on a very honest time, like, the only thing that raises our eyebrow is, we have to ask a question first. Why Crete? And who am I, who are we asking is the product owner, let's Apodi. Now, if Apodi is giving us the guarantee and the assurances that it's okay, pay it there, they are all look ready to send it to you. That puts our mind at rest. But if they are fine with it, who are we to say, no, we're not going to do it?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Asa, Asan, petroleum importer in the country, because I think you see, you say you are dealing with this PSTD, Trakti Gora? Okay, in a situation where Trakti Gora ship a consignee, we will use your company as a, as the supplier. And then in the bill of laying, you have the consignee, Jawa, who own the product.
So if the consignee is Jawa, but Trakti Gora ships, ships it to Jawa, Jawa owns it, has the consignee.
What would you say if I said, in the bill of laying, you have Apodi, and you have ultimate base as the consignee, and have create energy as also the consignee?
The two of them?
Yes.
Well, fundamentally, I think it shows that they are the owners.
So meaning the, the, the oil deposit at the petroleum depot, um, according to the...
According to what you have?
According to the bill of laying, is owned by Crete and Ultimate Beach.
If they are consignees?
Yes, they are the consignee.
Well, they are, yes.
Thank you.
Final question. Uh, there will be two questions, okay? Those are questions. Uh, thank you, Yarong Manida, and then for your doubts, uh, doing testimony. I just want to find out, because I know as a trader, what we are mostly interested is the availability of your product in the market. And then according to the testimony, when you had availability of the product, it was losing to show your interest. So I just want to find out, do you like to find out the legitimacy of the trader you traded with? Whether you try to find out that, who are you trading with?
On the law, like I said, on the law circumstances, whenever we are ordering product from anybody outside the area, we always do the need for due diligence to know the company we are dealing with. But with this particular case, it's different. Because we are, we are not the one that brought them in to the country. We see them just like any local player, because they are already local. But it's different if they're told we are contacting them from abroad. That is when we will do all the due diligence on them. So whoever have invited them here must have known what is, what everybody should have known, no. So I think those questions should be like to the person, if it's known who brought them in here, they do their due diligence on them. But for us, we just see them as local players. Local in the sense that they are operating here.
Do, do you also try to find out the quality of the product that you are buying? Because like, uh, when you had the availability of the product, once you lost in the straight contest without even knowing who you are dealing with, if I can say, if I'm right? And then, you know, in doing that, because not every, uh, product that comes or that you create, probably in terms of quality or standards, they are bought into order. Whether you do try to verify the quality of this product?
Yeah, that is true. When it comes to product quality, um, even for us, when we order products from abroad, we don't see the product physically. So that responsibility is shifted under the board. It is their responsibility to make so that the product that is come, that is, that has arrived, that is going to be stored in their tank, is tested. Certified gears are all checked to see if they are enlightened, and they have met the Cambian spec. And after that, they should take samples of it. They have some ways of testing them there. And if it is questionable, they can also send the same samples to Senegal, where they have certified labs, test these products for us. You understand? But we don't have direct access to do this. This is responsibilities that are supposed to be within the devil to certify that product, yes, is fit and is fitting the specs of the Cambian before they will allow them to dump it into the internal. So that's a responsibility for them, not the OMCs.
Okay, my last, my last question is like, uh, your personal, like when you are dealing with company, the name of the invoice, that was given to you. And then when it comes to payment, they gave you a different name, and you are thinking that's not normal. But according to you, uh, two other companies or traders, that for them, the name that we ask on the invoice, is the same name that you also write on the cheque. But for this one, you are dealing with a company in the invoice, with the, what it comes to payment, now it becomes a different name under the account. Uh, what was your thought, whether this is something that...
Yeah, for me to be very honest, in the beginning, when I saw this thing that, well, they want us, invoices and payments all to be in the name of Crete, for example. For me, um, I was just saying that maybe Crete is their local representative in the area. You understand? It is their local representative in the area, that they are the one who is doing all the local transactions. So they want us to deal with them. That's how I see it. I mean.
Still final one? Yeah, any other question? Okay, Mr. Ayda. Uh, what would you say around April, March, April, May? Because your company is actively involved in the retail of petroleum product in the country. In your memory, can you, uh, can you remember around this month, whether there was a, a fourth, fourth, and a third day within the country?
March, April, May of the year?
2023. Around the month of March, April, and May.
As far as my knowledge, I'm now, yeah, sure.
When you say a local transaction, local trading, because in this, in this thing, what we, the most of care is the issue of tax evasion. If somebody is transacting locally, locally, is that they are guy, I'm an individual entitled to be paying tax? Because you are transacting locally within the country. It's different, like, for example, let me put this in the English way. When Jawa, your company have a transaction with Trakti Gora, you make your bank payment and transfer the funds to, to their offshore account. That one is different when somebody is here trading with our dollars is converted into dollars, we are trading outside. What have, how, how, how would you compare these two transactions?
They are different. They are different, somebody is allowed openly to go trading. The impression is that he has got all his local license. Just the impression. Because he thought, I don't think it's an anything that he can test.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ayda. This has gone close to the death end of this, this person. But we want to thank you for all your compliance, for, uh, not being exactly the fact you wanted to take me, uh, you were here. So thank you for that conference and with a beautiful response. I need them was happy and appreciative of your full compliance. And we are together in this, we want to inquire and get the, uh, the bottom of the mind and show that at all the facts related to this petroleum product that was brought into the country.
Thank you.
So I want to, once again, uh, thank you and release you to go back to your destination. But for finally, you go, do you have any chance to get this?
Um, I think that's all about it, and thank you very much for, for this time, and hopefully we can just be, we can get some discoveries, I don't know. But thanks a lot.
You're welcome, much appreciated.
Alright, thanks.
You serve the party. Hello? Are we together, hold on? Why have you such trouble? Let's listen to guys and arrange members, please.
I'm, uh, thanks for the help, but I talk, I can't wait to mount.
Are you on line? Yeah, man. You're on, you're on, please, you're on, please. Yeah, man, is it like us? That's what I see, please. Come, we are discussing.